One nation, under God, into this world with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't hear you say prayer, I just heard you say it.
I told you to say that, that's what it said.
So I thought, okay, we'll just skip.
I need to read an approval of minutes, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any public comments today? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee officer reports. President, I have nothing today. Mr. Vice President?
Uh, nothing.
Alright, Highway?
We had some items and we will talk about them in the meeting.
Alright, Finance?
No meeting, we're going to meet next week.
Alright, Personnel?
We did.
Go ahead.
We did meet and we will discuss it later in our agenda.
Okay. Anything on the miscellaneous?
I do have one thing.
Okay.
We had our Hamilton County Fire Chiefs meeting and I think most of you should know, this was a pretty much an update from Mr. Snowden as well, most of you should know that New World is up and running as of March 7th and I just want to take a moment and commend Aaron Crass. I know that it wouldn't have been able to be completed as effectively and thoroughly as it was, so thank you Snowden and Aaron as well. So, that's really all I have.
Well, thank you. Alright, any unfinished business?
One item, I'm sorry, under miscellaneous, just a quick update for the Riverwalk project that we've been working on forever. It looks like they are planning for an August 19th completion date. There'll be a ribbon cutting somewhere along the line, I'll keep us posted on that date.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else under miscellaneous? Okay, now, seeing nothing, unfinished business, we have nothing there. Table business, we have a Park 144 amendment.
I would move to untable.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's untabled, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, that's it for that one. Uh, new business?
You know what just happened? Okay.
Alright, great.
Open public hearing concerning additional appropriations.
I think there's a question.
Wait a minute. Was that to be made retroactive to the order from this?
So that wasn't the rev-
Were you asking me your Fred?
Just a clarification.
It was retroactive to February 11th to the 38140.
Wouldn't it say that on there? Yeah, okay. Alrighty, new business, we have a-
Vendor claims.
Yeah, vendor claims. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have amendments, additional reductions of transfers, I have a 144 here, amendment reclassification, is there a motion?
You want to, these are all for the auditor, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah, we could put these together.
I set through that personnel meeting and I'll make that motion.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, great. Move on from that. Which brings us to item two, Councilman, is there a motion for the retardation additional?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Schwartz, it's yours, do you want to?
Um, it's just a reconciliation to the books for the additional, $25,000, it was approved last year.
Okay.
This is just to reconcile.
Where's this going? What department is this?
Janus. So it goes to Janus, it was a contractual obligation, Brad, that we missed last year and so we had the contract and there was an error, we didn't have enough money in the line item and so we're making it whole.
Okay.
Like about six or seven pages, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have Judicial Services, sponsored by Councilwoman Masalami, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Emergency management transfer, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have another transfer, B 1023, Hamilton County Airport Authority, is there a motion?
Moved.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hamilton County Building Corp reduction, those are always good, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we have Clerk Record Perpetuation Fund requesting $25,000, amount for additional appropriation, $214,340, is there a motion?
There he is, why don't we have the clerk come up and tell us what she's going to do with the money?
We have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Is the clerk, you want to come forward?
Yeah, Brad made it, I second. Hello?
Connie is my microfilm supervisor and she's here to answer any questions in case I can't, but we have about nine million images on microfilm that we would like to move so that we can see them on the computer and to do that we need a piece of equipment that costs about $25,000. I've got plenty of money in my perpetuation fund.
Says here you got $214,000, does that sound right to you?
Um, I honestly haven't looked lately.
But I mean, you'd think that's pretty close.
I would assume so.
And any other funds besides the perpetuation fund? Like the Clerk's Hidden Retirement Fund?
No, I wish I did though. Can we knew for that?
This is the only fund the Clerk's office has?
Yes, unless I come to you and you give me additional.
Yeah, that's not in the county general.
Right.
What, do you, do you see the day when we won't have microfilm anymore?
Yes.
And, and we're moving from microfilm onto computer storage of some type?
And that's what we want to do with these nine million images.
Okay, so, so you will use that machine to convert from microfilm to-
Yes.
And so years from now, when you're at the end of all the microfilm you got, then we'll be done?
Uh, yes. We, we've got a lot of old case files that we need to convert yet, but with the plan that Connie's come up with, I think we can do this within a year and a half possibly and we've looked at outsourcing it. If we outsource it, then records go outside this building, I don't like that idea.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. So when you get at the end of all the microfilm you got, then the records will go immediately on, or not hit microfilm?
They will be, they will be put on a network that the county owns and accessible by any county.
Tammy, I'm sorry, what did you say, you don't want to outsource it or have a third person?
For us to have a company do it, it's going to be very expensive, we think we can do it in-house with our own personnel and then they will take those rolls of film out of the building and then if somebody would come in, you want to look up a divorce decree or a civil case or whatever, that roll of film's not here for us to be able to give it to you. So, plus I lose control when it's not in the office, so I would rather do it in-house if we can do it, I think we can manage it better, organize it better, I just think all the way around it's a better solution.
I didn't know if you, you haven't gotten any bids for a company to come in with their equipment?
We have, we have talked to a company and we-
Idea how much expensive it was?
I believe it was $150,000.
It was like $17,000, I think, to do, $1,000 to do it.
And I have that money again in that account, but I'd rather not use it that way.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as court records, I want to make that clear, with our e-filing now, those are going in as they're filed, so we're kind of going back instead of, we're always going forward, but we're going back on these old records.
Thank you.
Call a question?
It's been moved to seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alrighty. Thanks Tammy.
Thank you.
Okay, Project, Project Income requesting $340,000, amount available for additional appropriation, $2,477,000, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is Ralph here?
Yes, he is.
Ralph, would you mind coming up? Thank you. Is this, this is in relation to the current news we had about the people?
No, no, this is, this is, this is replacement of technology that is very aging and we need to just update our technology. We own our current technology, just, we need to update it and this fund, that's what it's for because it's, it's participants that are on this technology, so.
Would, would the new technology help prevent some of what happened with those people that walked away?
That was, that was a different, that was a completely different situation, those individuals were from our residential program.
Okay.
It's a completely different level of situation.
Apples and oranges?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, alright, thank you.
It's been moved to seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Health Fund requesting $85,083, amount available for additional appropriation, $1,221,913, sponsored by Councilwoman Beaver, is there a motion? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motor Vehicle Highway Fund requesting $60,000, amount available for additional appropriation, $4,843,400, sponsored by me, I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, I do want to ask about this fund, Brad?
Yes, sir.
You got $4,843,400 in the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, what exactly is that used for, just enlighten me a little bit.
Well, it can be used for-
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
It's for overhead expenses and we use it for our operating budget, it can also be used for infrastructure improvements.
But right now it's sitting there, it's not, it's not being appropriated for anything, it's not earmarked for anything for, for 2017 right now. Don't have it-
Do you have other projects coming out of this fund?
Probably will have some, but no, we don't have any specifics.
You could, you could technically use this to pay, I say, a drainage bill from, from a, from a surveyor or something like that, you could do that. Okay, that's all I have, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motor Vehicle Highway, Park Non-Reverting Operator requesting $30,000, amount available for additional appropriation, $684,818, sponsored by Councilwoman McKinney, is there a motion to approve? Seconded, is there any discussion?
Now it's time to move.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Another $751,782, Parks and Recreation, again sponsored by Mr. McKinney, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Alright, I have a question on this one. It says 2016 Balance Not Encumbered, $513,578, but it says it's a re-appropriating funds because there's no contracts from 2016, that's a difference of $240,000 from the amount you're requesting, so I'm just a little confused by that number.
Actually, I'm confused by that number too. We had, we had requested a million dollars and gotten a million dollars last year for the tubing facility, we purchased the Snowcat that will be the piece of equipment that'll move the snow once we make it and that was $249,000, leaving the 751 out of the million that we had gotten last year for additional appropriation.
Yeah, I just see Balance Not Encumbered, somebody, it's, it's on this thing, it says $513,578, that's what it says, it's, it's just written down on our appropriation forms and then the, the amount is, it's just, that's, that's what we got here on our form.
That's the first-
On the additional-
Yeah, and I'll, I'll check it out, if you, if you're more comfortable just doing the 513 right now, we can-
Is that what you're saying, Rob and Dawn, that we're, we're short $238,000?
Well, no, there's plenty of money.
There's plenty of money in there.
It's just-
Okay. We're looking to approve $751,000 tonight?
Correct.
And that's been advertised, so, okay, okay.
What do you got on this, Rick?
Yeah, we've been moved to seconded, okay, anything else on this, Rick? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll check into that.
Okay, thanks, Al.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for everything, Mike.
Statewide 911 Fund requesting $72,121, amount available for additional appropriation, $314,731, sponsored by Councilwoman Masalami, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this?
I'd be happy to explain if you need explanation. So you're actually going to see this correlating then with what you see on letter N under the 4921 Non-Reverting Communication Fund, basically the portion that we're allocating on this 72121 on the additional is appropriating funds that were collected for the motorola warranty and then on the reduction, you'll actually see those come back for the additional on 4921. So it's just a movement of the money based on what we're kind of told we have to do, we're co-mingling funds, so.
Okay, you, do you want to combine J and N?
I would separate, well, actually I don't know if we need to, do I need to separate one, are there additional within that so we could do them all? I mean, if you wanted to do one and two on J as well as one on N, they basically are, ultimately it's just a swap of money between the two funds and then the additional is that 72,000 which is that portion of the motorola invoice, which is 9%, roughly 9%.
Motion to combine J and N? Is there a second?
Just to clarify though, just number one on N.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Get on to Non-Reverting Computer Maintenance Fund, $93,000.
Don't we have to do J2 or no?
No, we just combined them and voted on them both.
I thought you-
Yeah, no, we just have to separate two on N.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two is separate, so one and two on J and one on N.
Okay.
Alright, Non-Reverting Computer Maintenance Fund, item 4807, requesting $93,000, sponsored by Councilwoman Masalami.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is just the opportunity to purchase storage for long-term backups, it's actually lower than the anticipated cost we expected.
Okay.
Chris Morton's going to be here, so if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Alright, it's been moved to seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we got item 4809, 2013 GEO Bond Series A Transfer Appropriation, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Wait a minute, what, what is this?
Madam Auditor?
These are the, the GEO Bond, transferring money, we have to refer those.
So we're transferring from professional services to-
So you're doing $100,000 from professional services to machinery equipment and as Dan stated, the Phase 2 project was originally funded, we had to put the money in the machinery equipment, it's continued, or is it put into professional services and now go back to $4,500 to cover the cost of the video equipment?
Okay.
That's the first one and then the other one is the $643,000, we need to send the there and give it to the grant line item.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
4918 Uthessis Program Fund requesting $45,401, amount available, 117,476, this is sponsored by Personnel Committee, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
On this one, basically, they're moving money from one person to another, but there's no increase in the total amount of full-time personnel or full-time personnel benefits that the county pays. Long and short of it.
And is, is that, last of the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now we're going on to item two, is it, on N 4921? Sponsored by Councilwoman Masalami, that's the resolution concerning the purchase of real estate, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Amy, on this right here, you know, there's, the numbers are, and if Mr. Snowden wants to come up as well, we had just over a million dollars for the property, the total being requested though is $2,738,636 on this and, you know, it just, it's put together, I, I think the auditor was saying that there was part of it was, there was money that was coming in from the different cities on the fund, is that, is that what's the deal, what the difference in the numbers there? I mean, I'm just kind of trying to clarify. This is, okay, comp on office supplies, this has all been allocated.
So if you look at, like I think when we had talked previously, we knew that at some point it was likely we would have to have a backup site and Mr. Snowden, you can obviously elaborate further, but when they had gone through the process of looking at these and obviously Carmel then made the decision that they did and there were five buildings that they did in fact look at and Brad and I, and I know Steve had met with Mr. Snowden as well, that this was the building that ultimately fit the needs with the best, is the best fit and so I don't know if there's questions specifically to that, that the money itself had been allocated.
I sat in with Amy, it looks right to me that the cost of the building is compared to the private sector, pretty nondescript, so it's not in the high-rent district in Fisher's, pretty close to our railroad track, looks like the right fit as far as I'm concerned. I don't know what these other-
That was the appropriation, you, so you're only looking-
Right, and then, but what I'm saying is, because we already, we already appropriated
that, is that what we're saying? No, no, we're just approving the resolution on this, the real estate, correct? We've, we're just-
We also approved the other one, I'm just kind of asking.
That was the movement between the two, yeah, so you were moving from one fund, the 1222, to 4921 based on the co-mingling of funds, whatever they had stated that E911 you had to switch it around and so that's what we had-
We also appropriated it too, not just-
So we do put the money in the appropriate.
Right, okay, but so it's-
So are we appropriating the money to buy the building in this?
While you're doing that, the resolution is for the above $25,000.
Right, because it's above $25,000.
But we've already appropriated some of the money.
A few minutes ago we did, 1.1 million.
Yeah.
Which includes the cost of the building and the renovations.
Sometimes co-mingling is not a good idea.
Now, Mike, this is just my main question, I know it's going back to this one and it's, but you know, I'm still going to ask it because when I look at the, the office supplies and all that, you said reduction, I get that part of it, but what I'm saying is you had this in your budget when you came to us for 2016 for your 2017 budget, correct?
In 1222, yes.
Right, and then it just has to be moved, that's what we're getting at?
We moved to 4921.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, my bad.
Now, have the appraisals already been done? The two appraisals already been done for the-
So it's two different questions, Mr. Glenn's question was referring to moving funds from 1222 to 4921, as it relates to the building, the appraisal is in process right now.
And the building, when you get it, the building, what about the mechanical, electrical and plumbing?
So Buildings and Grounds is doing an additional inspection with their vendors or whoever they normally use and so we don't have that inspection report back. The inspection report I have in hand does show that the building is in good shape, there may be a couple of small items that would be part of the renovations that we already have plans for.
You, you get this appraisal, it comes in above or below, I mean, what are you, are you prepared to get more than one, I mean, what's the, the process on that, is it the same as, just enlighten me, you know?
I apologize, I cannot enlighten you, I've never bought a building here in Indiana.
Connie, is the praise value plus or minus 10%?
What it is, okay.
You have to get two appraisals.
Yes, we do.
Okay. You get two appraisals, you can't sell it for more than the average of the two, I think that's what the statute says.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yep, that is correct.
So that's why I'm confused what, how we can appropriate the money to purchase if we don't have-
That's a good question.
A government entity can't pay more than what the appraisals would come in at.
And he's got to get two of them.
Correct.
So what do we-
Chris, what we're do, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, so what we're, so what we're doing, so last year this money was set aside for, for this purchase, so what we're doing now is those monies that they set aside, we're going ahead and appropriating, but nothing will be let go until all the i's have been dotted, the t's have been crossed and then it allows us to be ready because you got like that 20-day turnaround to get the money to the people that are buying it through the title company and so this just allows us to be ready, but nothing will be let go until we make sure that everything by law has been, you know, like I said, done. What if the price is less? Yeah, right, so then basically we would come back and ask for deappropriation and, yeah, so yeah, so no, nothing, nothing's let go until-
So we would see that though, if they did come back last, we would have to see that before it would be purchased because he would have to come back for that, what you just said, the reduction.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we're not going to pay for something that, that's more, it's like, they have the money sitting there, but they would come back to deappropriate the excess, so to speak.
Yeah, the excess, the excess would then just be able to be used for fixing things and-
I think that's a different-
No, it's a different, no.
Okay, so what happens with the extra money?
They would deappropriate it.
So they would either deappropriate it or they would come back for a transfer of funds out of that line item, so we're not going to let them spend that land money for anything until it's put into the correct line item and that's one of the things that Dawn and I have pounded into people for years about, no, you're not going to buy that out of this line because it's not the appropriate line, so we do watch that.
And that would come back, I mean, you would see that obviously with the purchase agreement once that's been, the appraisals come back, I mean, all of that was, it would be included anyway, so we have to be aware.
You, from people that you've talked with, do you expect any issues with the appraisal versus what?
None whatsoever, I'm told that the purchase amount is less than what the building's worth.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Know that.
We have a move and second on this.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alrighty, 8221 Highway Reimbursement Fund requesting $202,000, amount available for additional appropriation, $199,940, sponsored by Councilman McKinney, there's a form in there, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's just reimbursement for things we already paid.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then we have 4 cent request from Janus, amount available for additional appropriation, $1.
Still moved.
Alright, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
And a JD AI Grant Transfer Appropriation, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then last, the Molester Community Crossings Grant requesting $990,000, amount available for additional appropriation, $1 million.
I have a little, just a question on, and I'm sorry to back up on Q.
Q, okay.
How, on this, how do you, how do they decide, this is for overtime to split between two people, is it, is that right? So how do they, how do they decide who's getting what or do they have to decide or?
Right, so you have a memorandum of understanding that-
Right.
Tells who the two individuals are.
Right.
And then they track their time and then I know I have talked with Ollie and I believe it was Judge Felix knows that whatever monies are excess, those monies will have to be returned to the state.
Okay.